So he'll be back. So this is the facilities meeting of November 29th. Present are board members, committee members, Yval Krupkerr, Ari Kisonis and myself, Mike Barbas's chair. Our superintendent, Steven Adamowski is here. Common council member. Bruce Kimmel is here, as well as our CFO, Tom Hamilton, and our head of facilities, Bill Hurdell, as well as Ralph Valenti and Brendan Williams. And our speaker, who will, I believe, start with this, is Mike Zubba from Malone and McBurnham.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the agenda tonight, there were really kind of two things that were follow-ups from the last facilities committee meeting. One was this issue of the walk zone around the proposed building sites in South Norwalk. And the other was for complete information on the survey, the South Norwalk survey, which we now have. So we've grouped those under old business. But I just wanted to point out that our primary purpose tonight is the Ponus Ridge project. And then per year, you know, instructions, we're going to be returning to the South Norwalk school site at the next.
At the subsequent meeting.
At the subsequent meeting. So those are the two things we need to follow up on. And we have Mike Zubba, who's done some excellent work defining the walk zone and racial balance issues. And they bring us to several conclusions, which I think we do want to be able to discuss with you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Adamowski. So I'll jump right into it. So as a follow-up from the last meeting, we were really asked to take a look at that critical quarter mile, which really started at a half mile. We found that a half mile just encompassed way too many kids for the size of the school that we were discussing in South Norwalk. So we cut that back to a quarter mile and began looking at Columbus, beginning looking at the Elye site, just to see how many students would fall in that catchment if you were to have a quarter mile radii around it. And it's a fairly dense neighborhood area. For the Nathaniel Elye neighborhood, we're capturing about 412 pre-K8 students, and that's based on the addresses of the current 16 and 17 student enrollment. Around the Columbus neighborhood, we're capturing about 540 students. What you'll see on all the maps is sort of the underlying color, and especially in the South Norwalk area, you're going to see many different patterns of color. So that just shows how fragmented the existing catchment zones are there, as well as having this gray area, which refers to those unassigned areas within the neighborhood. Taking a deeper dive into the.
Turn the turn.
Yeah. You got me?
It wasn't me.
No.
It was Tom.
It was Tom. Sorry about that. Looking at the two areas and taking a deeper dive, as was asked by us, to be able to take a look at what is the composition of the students there, because we know overall, the district is about 69 percent. We have a target of about 86 percent to be able to be within the compliant zone of that state mandate. Looking at the Elye area, we have about 95 percent non-white, 84 percent of those are free and reduced lunch at the pre-K8 level. That doesn't really change when you take a look at some of the younger students, and we now have those sixth through eighth graders still, 95, and now 83 percent. In the Columbus area, of the 539 students, we have 97 percent are non-white, and 87 percent are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and that reduces slightly when you look at just the pre-K5 component there of 96 percent and 84 percent. So just using that quarter mile as our only parameters for the catchment zone, especially for looking at the Elye area, we have about the right number of students. However, we would not be anywhere close to being in compliance if it was strictly a neighborhood school drawing there for the attendance zone and the catchment area. Diving down even deeper within that quarter mile, looking at where the students currently attend, as I mentioned earlier, we had the very colorful map with all those different areas assigned as attendance zones. So students are being outplaced, not only from the magnet programming, but also just the nature of the sending and receiving areas for the Sono district or Sono area. Of the students we have there, just really focusing on the upper table, those elementary school students, we really have a collection of schools that those students attend with. Rowayton Elementary leading the way at about 55 students, or about 19 percent. Silver Mine is about 40 students, or about 13 percent. I skipped Kendall S72, about 25 percent. And Columbus Magnet, 22 students, or 8 percent. So really, there is a potpourri of students attending various elementary schools throughout the city. When we look at the middle school attendance, it's a little more evenly split between the schools themselves. With 122 divided by four, it's roughly about 30 per each of those schools within that quarter mile attendance zone.
God bless you.
Thank you. Taking a look at the quarter mile around the Columbus school, what we find by looking at where the students actually attend there, Brookside Elementary has the largest percentage of students attending, at 20 percent, or 74 students. And then we have a clustering of Columbus Cranberry as well as Aramack Elementary School there, and each in the mid-30s. And then Silver Mine, 47, and Wolfbit, 68. So we have some predominant outplaces, but there's still many students attending some smaller components of schools. Looking at the middle school there, it's a little less evenly distributed, with West Rocks and Nathan Hill being the predominant middle schools that those students attend. And then Pymnus and Roden there, with Roden the next largest attended and Ponus the least. And I know this doesn't directly follow your agenda, but just for sake of continuity, if you don't mind, I'll kind of keep going, Dr. Adamowski. So what we wanted to do was really take a look at drawing captures on our attendant zone around the Nathaniel Elye site, as well as then what would be the balancing factor that would be necessary from a magnet component in order to be able to have compliance with the state racial balance mandate. And we have two different options here, and you know, these options aren't set in stone. This is really kind of a starting point, giving you food for thought, getting that discussion flowing around good information. Option one is really looking at a more limited neighborhood component. We have a very small capture zone, much smaller than that quarter mile that we showed. There's about 290 students within this. We just carved this up for discussion purposes. There could be adjustments made to it based on input, those students coming from Rudner Court, as well as the stable residential neighborhoods that are just to the south and just to the north of the site. What we're doing, because we know this area is predominantly non-minority students, we're looking at having a draw of about 185 from throughout the district. So this would be what we would call an open magnet or an open choice system, where there would be no ranking and weighting based on any factors or neighborhoods of where those sending areas are. It's just assuming that the students of this 185 really represent that 69 percent minority of the rest of the district. In order to achieve that target threshold of 86 percent for the racial balance, we would need about 185 students of those 290 students coming from outside, so coming from outside the neighborhood. So it gives you a much smaller neighborhood component, but it gives you a much larger opportunity for the choice program for that neighborhood school, or for that school. Looking at the other option, option two, we wanted to bring in a much larger neighborhood component and have a much more concise or precise magnet component that would be based on geographic area, that would be really kind of aiming to balance the racially balanced the school. So looking at a larger neighborhood component, we're filling it out of about 400 students for a pre-K5 based on the boundaries that we captured here. A lot of this is picked up not only in the neighborhood surrounding the site, but also working out in the northward and capturing a lot of those unassigned students as well. We assume 65 students would be attending from a magnet system that would draw based on a geographical area, and that 80 percent of those magnet students would be non-minority. So almost the opposite of what we're talking about for the neighborhood. So that allows you to have a much larger neighborhood component, being able to get more of those students that are within the area there into the new elementary school, but also then limiting that choice component or the magnet component for, in order to attain that 85, 86 percent threshold that we know is the target for racial balance according to the state mandate. Good question.
No.
If you have a question, honestly, on this slide, just stop me and then we can discuss.
What I think might be helpful is, in either of these cases, especially the second case, have you had examples you've worked with that are structured similarly?
To this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's many ways to achieve it, what we've seen before and what we've worked on, where sometimes you have a combination of not only the neighborhood component and the magnet that is targeted to, say, certain neighborhoods, because you know the underlying demographic there. Another one would be to have the neighborhood component as well as the satellite area, in addition to the choice. So you could have then two structured geographic areas that are completely different demographics, feeding into the school, and then you have this overarching open choice sort of magnet component around it. What we find from experience is really what works best for your individual community, and that's from the parental and the community viewpoint of, you know, what do they view the schools as? Are they neighborhood schools, or are they choice schools? And what is acceptable? What are your transportation challenges? How is your roadway network set up? How best can you move students based on these areas where your existing sort of portfolio buildings are? Do you have an area that has been growing that maybe isn't best served by a school in that area, where you can satellite them into a school? So really, it gives you an opportunity to be able to develop a solution that is tailored to you guys and what you want to accomplish. But I've seen many different options, as well as full open choice. We were asked next to.
Before you go to Jefferson, Jefferson is really under 4C of the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to make a kind of clarifying conclusion from what Mike just presented to you. When we began this discussion, it was unclear as to whether or not the second school in South Norwalk could be simply a neighborhood school or needed to be an intra-district magnet program. It's now clear from the demographic analysis that we would need both schools to be intra-district magnets in order to reach the racial balance guidelines. So I think that's a major structural component we need to put in place to these recommendations now. And at your next meeting, I'm going to be discussing some program options with you that are derived from our survey, but also what we feel would be robust enough to be able to attract a significant number of families from outside the neighborhood to these schools in order to achieve racial balance. So again, this is a major learning, I think a major conclusion that was unknown, you know, even a few weeks ago, that both schools will need to be intra-district themed program schools.
And they're kind of a set of questions, and I'm sure maybe my committee members have them too. But Mike, looking at these data of where students in these two quarter mile zones, radiuses live, or radii live in, you know, it seems like they're more spread out to a certain extent in the Columbus quarter mile radius than the Elye. Is that because, and maybe you don't know this number, but is this because there are a lot of unassigned, what they sometimes call District 99 students, or is it just the way that patch quilt of neighborhood schools is developed, perhaps has been established?
It's actually a little bit of both. You do have some of these smaller, sort of, I'll call them satellites, the neighborhood school areas in there.
Okay.
So that contributes to some degree, but it's also the unassigned, and you know, the choice of where they're placed, you know, it's difficult for us as an outside consultant to say, well, is it based on capacity? Is it based on space? Probably it is. That's the logical answer. And it also could be part of the overall racial balancing plan for each of those more suburban type of the neighborhood schools that would be balancing sort of from the other side as well.
I mean, just having been on the board five years, my take is until a couple of years ago, it was more kind of space available.
Okay.
Random than anything else. I think under the new superintendent, we have a different strategy towards the District 99 students, and parents are given a choice. I don't know how much that's been used in practice, but so I think it is. And I know, you know, at one point, you could see in the Columbus radii, you know, all those students at Wolfbit, there was a period there where the Wolfbit neighborhood, their enrollment really dropped, and that was really our only school that had capacity.
Yes.
And so I don't think we've, in my knowledge, in the five years I've been on the board, we've never said, oh, this, or no one in Central Office, to my knowledge, has said, oh, this school is off, you know, racial balance regs. It's really been more space available, catches, catch can, than my take. I mean, but they used to do it in August, you know, a week before, two weeks before school started. It was crazy. And then my second question is, you know, as the margin for having looked at this data, it seems pretty clear cut that if you were going to choose where you would build a new school, you might be more partial to the Columbus area, because there are more kids in that quarter mile radius than there are in the Elye catchment area within a quarter mile. I mean, at the margin. Right? Looking PK5, 290 versus 375, I mean, that's almost 25 percent more kids.
If you were to have a solely walking school, and you weren't subject to the state racial balance laws, because you wouldn't be able to fill out the school, so you would automatically be.
Right, not all of those kids would be able to count.
Yeah, you would be out of compliance.
Right. Okay.
Just on that point, we can also do what Stanford does and give preference to students of families in income restricted housing. This is how Stanford deals with the racial balance issue. And so you have the King Kennedy complex across from Columbus, you have the Rudner Court complex adjacent to Elye. We could really accomplish the same thing, either through giving neighborhood preference to a portion of the students. Essentially, we would have two different lotteries, right? One for neighborhood, one for the rest of the city. Or we could give preference to students in income restricted housing and probably accomplish the same thing. But again, the major learning here is that we will need to have a theme as an intra-district magnet in both schools. And, you know, I think it's a decision of this committee as to whether or not you feel it is best to have the new school on the Columbus site or the Elye site, and vice versa. Wherever you make that decision, then Columbus would go on the other site. And I think that's something, you know, I hope you'll be discussing, and because that needs to be part of your recommendations to the full board.
But I think, Steven, at this point, you have stated, you know, that obviously the Columbus magnet school, wherever it's located, would be a K8 school.
Correct.
And have you given us a recommendation on this new neighborhood, or new quasi-neighborhood magnet school?
I'll have several things to explore at your next meeting. Again, some of this is derived from the survey, some of it will be simply our judgment in terms of how robust a choice has to be in order to attract families from other parts of the city.
But you've got, I think the way you've talked about is that the second school, at least here at a four, would be maybe more of a PK5 school.
Correct.
And they would go to middle school at Roden.
No, the second school would definitely be a PK5 school. And I think we're, we would need to be consistent in the recommendation that those students go to Roden. So there'd be about three sections, about 70 students that would go to Roden, that is, that can be accommodated easily at Roden. And when we get further into the presentation at Jefferson, you'll see it's also an offset for three sections less at Jefferson, as Jefferson becomes a part of the K8 STEM school.
That's great. And do you have any other questions, Yval? Fine? Okay. Then let's move on to the kind of skipping on the agenda, going to 4C, which is talking about Ponus and Jefferson.
Well, as you want, Brendan to come up with the survey next.
If you don't mind waiting, Mike, just keep on South Norwalk. You'd like to come present?
Rob, is it possible to skip ahead?
Uh, yes. I don't know. I threw the whole system out.
Right? Thought it was tough.
At your last meeting, you had a preliminary look at this, but it did not include the families attending the Odyssey preschool, because those results had not been submitted and compiled yet. So this is the complete everything now, and the complete analysis.
We just closed this down right prior to Thanksgiving, so we have everything included here, all of the hard copies that we collected, as well as the online input as well. We have a total of 713 responses to the questionnaire, both hard copy and online, in both English and Spanish, which I think is a really good number of people who participated to give us a little bit of feedback on some of the questions that they asked. 545 of the participants were current NPS parents or guardians. 86 identified themselves as future parents, meaning they had students who were either in pre-K programs or infants. And then we had about 59 community members who were just general interest, did not have a student in the school system. Almost 40 percent, 39 percent of the respondents identified as being from South Norwalk, South Norwalk residents. About 129 of those reported that they were from what we call the unassigned locations. And we had 423 people weigh in, identified as other areas of the city. Out of the total respondents, we had about 89 percent, 632 people say yes, they were in favor of building a new school on the Nathaniel Elye campus. And then we parsed that out by some of the other audiences as well. Those who identified themselves as South Norwalk residents, there were 85 percent of those who said that they were in favor of building a school at Nathaniel Elye, 43 no's and 235 yeses. Out of the unassigned audience, 109 people said yes, they wanted a school built on the Nathaniel Elye campus, that's another 89 percent. And then out of our future families, 76 percent said they'd like to see a school there, and only 10 said no. So that's about 88 percent of the future families, the ones who are coming up over the coming years, were in favor of this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Were these questions asked in isolation, or is this the result of some kind of choice? Would you rather have this versus that? Or it's like asking a kid, do you, would you like a piece of candy if you don't do a problem?
Well, it was asked about South Norwalk in general. So we asked them, you know, if you were, if you had a choice, would you have a K through five, K through eight, or neither? Are you in favor of a school in South Norwalk, or are you not? So the questions did build, but you didn't have to answer all of them. Does that answer your question?
They were all separate.
They were all separate. Yes, yeah. And this was not a scientific survey necessarily, it's just a piece of input from the community and another piece of feedback.
And the questions are on the top of each slide, correct?
Correct. The questions are on the top of each slide, yes.
So it wasn't, Bruce, like you answered yes, then you had a sub-question? Each question stood on its own?
Correct.
And you can see the surveys online?
Yes, yes. We asked the respondents if they were, if a new school was to be built at Elye, would it be, would they be interested in a K through five or a K through eight school? We had about 402 people say K through eight out of the total, 247 K through five. About the South Norwalk.
You see this consistently as an area of support for K schools in the district.
South Norwalk residents, 111 of them were in favor of the K through five, 130 were in favor of the K through eights. Our unassigned families, 54 of them were in favor of K eight, 52 were in favor of K through five. And then we asked folks, or, I guess, our future families, our pre-K folks, K through five were 32, and K through eight was 48. About 57 percent to 38 percent.
You say South Norwalk residents, when you mention South Norwalk residents, did you ask them if they were South Norwalk residents, or?
Yes.
Did you?
Yep.
Okay. Did you put a parameter of what a South Norwalk resident is?
We did not. We put a parameter for, are you an unassigned resident, as the district defines unassigned, what the addresses are. But we did not, we let people self-identify if they.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And the other areas, you don't know where they're from?
We have the other areas, we have it broken down by school.
Okay.
We did ask people to identify if they were a.
Affiliated another school?
Exactly. So we do have that breakdown, we just didn't break it down into that minutia here. We asked all respondents if they thought that the Nathaniel Elye location should be a neighborhood school or a magnet school. Pretty evenly divided, 55 percent versus 45 percent for neighborhood versus magnet. With the favor of going to magnet here. South Norwalk residents, 143 were in favor of magnet school, 123 voted for a neighborhood And then the breakdown for the unassigned families, 49 percent to 51 percent, neighborhood school, 61, magnet school, 58. And then we asked about the type of magnet theme or programming that folks thought a magnet school should have. And this is what Dr. Adamowski talked about a little later, so. We had a few different options that we asked people to choose from, based on some of the feedback that we already had from the forums that we had, and from the facilities committee meetings that we've had in the past, the budget forums. And those were, the options were moving the Columbus school with the Bank Street programming to the location. Another choice was adopting the environmental science program that Odyssey preschool currently has in place and continuing that on into the new school. Another option was a STEAM program. Another option was a Monta Story program. And then we had just an answer for any other option. A couple of people did weigh in on things like ID, support for the arts, bilingual programs, but those were just one or two answers here and there for folks who did answer. So as you can see here, there's a lot of support for a STEAM program among all the respondents, and some equal support for environmental science, and moving the Columbus program over. Changes a little bit when you get down to the South Norwalk residents and the unassigned locations. So you've got about 84 people who were in favor of environmental science, and 81 who were in favor of STEAM. So those are a little bit different than the overall numbers. And then when you talk about the families who live in unassigned locations, again, 42 people were in favor of an environmental science theme, 34 people were in favor of a STEAM program. Again, there was a lot of comments about making sure that the arts are involved and that we're keeping those in mind as well.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Was there a qualifier in the question for environmental science that would be associated with the Maritime Center?
The qualifier was that it would be, that it would be like the Odyssey Learning Program. So we do not qualify it as a maritime affiliated program, but as an Odyssey Learning Center type of program, so. And then our future families as well, similar to the South Norwalk families, the unassigned families as well, the environmental science and the STEAM programs were the two options that were most favored, so. We did separate out the feedback from Columbus families, as they were involved in a lot of the discussions that we had in South Norwalk, at the meeting that we had down at Nathaniel Elye, as well as meetings that we had there on site. There were 74 total responses from people who identified as Columbus families. And as you can see here, they are very much in favor of a K through eight program, as Dr. Adamowski mentioned, you know, that's already something that's in the works for Columbus. The themes that they were interested in for potential new schools, if there was one to be a Nathaniel Elye, I was surprised to find that 35 of them did talk about moving Columbus over to Nathaniel Elye as something that would be of interest, and STEAM and. And STEAM and environmental science were other ones that this group was behind as well, so. So some of the open answers we got, they were a little bit all over the place. It was an interesting opportunity for people to have a lot of input on a lot of, a variety of topics, but there were some themes that came out of this. Far and away, the number one piece of input that people gave in the open answers is that they're concerned about the other schools in the system as well. They understand the need for extra space and the interests of South Norwalk and the building there, but people also want to make sure that our other school buildings are not overlooked in the process because there's a keen awareness that we need investment and upgrades throughout the system. Strong support for South Norwalk students deserving options closer to home. It's very important to this community that the school reflect the diversity of Norwalk is something we hear very frequently. Making sure that it's a safe environment is an important part of the plan for folks. As Dr. Adamowski talked about a little bit too, strong programming and support, including after-school options, so people want to make sure that it's a comprehensive program with perhaps before and after care like Appian Bell, as we have in other schools. There's a lot of interest in more magnet programs overall in the district, but people want to make sure that the magnet schools are not taking away from the funding of our neighborhood schools at the same time, so there's a little bit of concern about that. And then last but certainly not least, there's some ongoing concern from our pre-K parents about making sure that there's continued availability of adequate spaces for younger kids, whether it's pre-K or daycare. There's a lot of people who want to make sure that anything that we do at Nathaniel Ely or elsewhere keeps in mind that we need a lot of spaces for pre-K students as well, so. Okay, so that's, that's pretty much it. Overall, there was very strong support for a-- All right, did you have something?
You can finish up.
Very strong support for a school at Nathaniel Ely, sort of mixed information on what that theme might be. And, you know, a lot of support for making sure that we continue to focus on the investment that's required at all our schools over the five to 10-year period, so.
So the question is, with the theme of the magnet school, or if it's going to be a STEAM or environmental science?
Yeah.
Does this mean we would have to partner with the Maritime Center or what?
Yeah, so, you know, many of the parents, particularly those that were the future, in that future category, are parents that are enrolled at the Odyssey preschool. Remember, Odyssey is the entity that took over for the Housing Authority on all the city's preschool slots, and they're located primarily in that current Nathaniel Ely building. So I have visited there, talked with the director as well as Brian Davis, the head of the Aquarium. They have a very good environmental science program at the school as one of the partners of Odyssey. The parents obviously like it, and I think you see their familiarity with it and liking it as reflected in their survey responses. Whether or not that would be robust enough to attract families from other parts of the city, I think is a judgment call that we're going to have to make, you're going to have to make. But I've had one discussion with Dr. Davis. There was certainly openness on the part of the Maritime Aquarium to partner with us. This is a nod without expense because they would, similar to what they're doing at Odyssey, they would have to station one of their educators actually at the school in order to do the environmental science units. There would be animal displays at the school, there would be field trips to the aquarium and back and forth and so on. But this is a partner that has a very well-developed sense of what an environmental science program should look like and also has spent time becoming knowledgeable in the next-generation science standards as the fundamental delivery system for this. So, you know, I would approach this with optimism that if we decided to go in this direction, and by the way, this is not a decision that you would make relative to the Brits and Water recommendation to the board, but it would be something that would be looked at during the Ed Speck's process in the spring. But certainly, you know, consistent with our strategic operating plan, a partnership would be an important aspect here.
Thanks, that would open up a whole bunch of other questions for me too, in terms of, you know, what type of teachers are we going to hire, curriculum, things like that? Does it still fall under our purview, you know, where does it lie?
Yeah, so it's a partnership.
Yeah.
It would not affect, it would certainly affect the science curriculum.
Yeah.
It probably would not affect the ELA or math curriculum. The, you know, we are dealing with the handicap of having the shortest elementary school day. We would probably in a partnership situation have to extend the day in terms of the after-school programs being oriented toward the theme of the school, whether it was environmental science or something else. But these partnership schools are very common in other school districts in Connecticut throughout the nation. I think, you know, we could certainly work it out and we would have a very solid partner in the Maritime Aquarium if we decided to go in that direction.
Stephen, don't we have some form of partnership with the Maritime as it is at Jefferson?
We do it Jefferson for field trips, yes.
Of not in the classroom?
Correct. So there's not an educator there. There are aspects that are occurring at Odyssey that are not occurring in Jefferson.
So just curious, you may not be able to answer this, but how long of a contract will we sign with them? Will this be an indefinite, open-ended contract?
I don't know, no. Generally, generally you would have a memorandum of understanding, right? And, I mean, the ones I've seen have been for three to five years, renewable by the, you know, mutual consent of the parties and so on.
I'm sure they won't go belly up, but if they do.
No, you need some protections, it's not an indefinite situation.
Then we change the whole theme of the school too, correct?
Absolutely. A lot could happen over time.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing to keep in mind here, we're talking about something that would not occur for at least three years, right? Now, if you were to move Columbus to the Ely side, it would not occur for these five years. And we're going to have to, we would have to assess the situation at that point in time. Three to five years, you know, a lot of changes can occur.
Okay. Any other questions about Brian? Okay, well, thanks, Brenda. I think that was really helpful to have that kind of community input on the survey. Those are way higher numbers than it looked like we were going to get. The survey has now been closed, so these are the standing results that we'll be working with as a guide towards community input, which we have vowed to go for. And, you know, we have meetings in South Norwalk, we've done surveys, and this will all factor into our decision process. I think now we will go back to, we'll not go back to, we'll go to the fourth topic, which is the Ponus Ridge Project. The superintendent will be talking about what the magnet school potential there would be and what the structure of the school would be. And Mr. Zuber here is going to go over kind of the demographic data, and then we'll talk a little bit about the site, as it is one of our biggest sites out there.
So I think we're on for a review discussion of proposed magnet school theme, curriculum issue, and resource requirements. So I'm passing around to you some discussion notes, and Tom, if you could share those with the public as well. So here is a vision for a K8 elementary STEM campus. First of all, we are identifying STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, and VAM, because we are seeking in another part of the facilities plan to reduce Jefferson to a 400-student neighborhood school. And as you know, we have the aberration there of 600 and some odd students with over 200 of them housed in 12 temporary classrooms in the back of the school. So we're seeking to correct that. And one of the clear objectives of the plan is to renovate Jefferson as new in Phase Two of the building program and return it to neighborhood school status. However, because Jefferson is a science magnet, right? Now, you know, I have to tell you, the science magnet even in and of itself, if it was robust, would be outdated, you know, it's a concept of 20 years ago. The concept now is STEM or STEAM if you could afford to at the arts as well. But, you know, in discussing this with the principal, it's also clear that the, what has become known as the magnet program at Jefferson is basically a science field trip program. Jefferson does not teach science anymore or any differently than any other school. They all use old textbooks. And we have not yet gotten to the curriculum of the next-generation science standards. But what Jefferson does have now, it has field trips to the Maritime Aquarium, Nature's Classroom, and this one other group that is involved. But it's all those folks coming to the school and then the students going on a field trip. So, you know, our intent here would be to update and build on the science magnet theme and create a real STEM school. So let's take a look at how that would look in a K8 elementary campus. As you know, Ponus is the largest landholding, 65 acres, so there's room to do almost anything there that one could imagine. We're recommending that to develop a K8 campus, we divide this into two schools, a 450-student K5 lower school and a 600-student 68 upper school. So let's look at what the upper, the lower school might look at like. This would be the elementary school. It would have a STEM focus and theme, replacing the science magnet currently at Jefferson. Lottery preference would be given to current Jefferson students. Now, that would be a mix, not only of Jefferson neighborhood students, but students who are currently at Jefferson for the magnet prior to enrollment being closed, which was this year, because of the numbers we had to close enrollment. Jefferson would then be enabled to return to its former K5 neighborhood school status of 400 students and renovate it as new in Phase Two of the building program. Now, here are some STEM components at the lower elementary level. Daily instruction in experiential science. Experiential science is a very different approach than what we are used to in science instruction. The major trainer of teachers in experiential science in Connecticut is the Connecticut Science Center in Hartford. And they have trained the staff of virtually every STEM school in the state of Connecticut that has opened as a magnet so far. This is a major commitment, it's a three-year training program. But in experiential science, students approach almost any problem by gathering data, analyzing the data, and drawing a conclusion. At the end of three years of training, the school would have its own science units that are aligned to the next-generation science standards and would virtually be textbook-free, not dependent on textbooks. They would use a variety of materials. It would take about three years to accomplish that, as it has in other places in Connecticut. The ELA in math instruction would remain the same primarily in grades K through three, where students are learning skills. But at the point a student has learned to read and is now reading a word, we would have an infused or aligned curriculum in science. So in other words, the things that one would read in ELA in grades four and five would be science-oriented trade books. Math would be oriented and aligned toward science topics and projects and so on. We would have something that our district has had no experience in so far, and that would be an elementary engineering program. The national motto for this is called the EIE. Again, it's a staple in STEM schools in Connecticut and throughout the country. Generally, this type of school would have a Legos lab for the youngest children, K2, and there's a whole Legos engineering curriculum, believe it or not. These things are wonderful if you're ever going to a Legos lab. We would have an engineering lab for students in grades three through six. Technology would be integrated throughout the curriculum at a higher level than other schools, but there would also be a technology lab. So this is not a school that would have separate science labs. Every classroom would have tables and chairs as opposed to desks and chairs and a sink where most science instruction could occur. But there would be a technology lab that you would go to where you're going to use on an infrequent basis some of the higher levels of technology and some of the gadgets and technological innovations that would be necessary to check certain experiments and so on. And generally, these schools at the elementary level would have a creatures lab or an earth science lab where the animals would be, and, you know, students would care for these animals and they would enter into, you know, experiments in genetics and other kinds of earth science and other kinds of things. So I think one of the strengths of going in the STEM direction is that we have natural, national exemplars, we have schools in Connecticut, we have schools nationally that can be modeled. So it's very easy to answer the question, what does an elementary STEM school look like and what should we do? A very big teacher training commitment here, particularly at the elementary level, where we would have to solicit staff that are willing to take the training, it's three summers, and willing to stay in the school and make a long-term commitment to the school. But again, we have lots of STEM interests among our faculty currently, so I don't think that would be difficult to do. The upper school would be 600 students. Now, this is, this would be sized relative to our capacity needs. So it too would have a STEM-focused theme and continuation of the lower school. We would give lottery preference to lower school students, so anyone who completed the lower school would have first preference into the upper school. It would also give preference to Kendall and Jefferson students because that's their school currently. Now, the other feeder to Ponus is Brookside. And Brookside, I'm sorry--
Fox Run.
Fox Run, thank you. And Fox Run is equidistant between West Rocks and Ponus. So those families probably should have a choice of West Rocks or Ponus. The lottery, we would have a second lottery. We'd have one lottery coming into pre-K and K, and we would have a second lottery in grade six. So the enrollment of the school would go up in grade six to accommodate middle school students who would lottery in for middle school. Ponus would be reduced from its current nine sections per grade to eight sections per grade. And in terms of the building program, three of the classrooms would be able to be converted to specialized STEM spaces or laboratories. I think it's important to point out also that any laboratory situation in either school should be used K through eight to the extent possible by all students because these are expensive investments and it's something that you want full utilization of, once the investment of the building program. If you look at, on the flip side of this page, you'll see some of the STEM program components at the upper elementary level. Six through eight would include integrated math and science lessons. There's actually this I, EYE, program that is developed in which math and science are not separate subjects, but they're integrated in a larger block of time in the middle school curriculum. Interdisciplinary units of instruction are very appropriate in a STEM school for middle grade or transadolescent students. Project-based learning, the engineering program in the middle grades is Project Lead the Way. We would have innovative technology, connectivity to other STEM schools-- We would have innovative technology, connectivity to other STEM schools internationally, so students could contact students in another country that are working on the same problem or same experiment and share what they are doing. This also is the bridge for second language instruction that begins in, in middle school. And the school would offer robotics, and horticulture would also be an aspect of this, developing some of the outside property that, that exists there for STEM purposes. So, that's kind of the overview of the, of the upper school. A number of the STEM-supporting facilities in each building would be shared at K-8. And again, you know, if there was a plantarium, all, all these things cost money, this is in many respects going to be a cost consideration, but there are many STEM accoutrements that, that are found in, in STEM schools and could be added, a plantarium, gardens, labs, et cetera, to the extent possible. We would want those shared between the two buildings, K through eight. The STEM program costs would be supported by a 1,000-per-student intra-district magnet school allocation. Board members are familiar with this concept. I mentioned it to you last year as a budget goal for this year. When I recommend the budget to you, you're going to see this in areas that where it's necessary, dual language at Silvermine, the Bank Street program for, for Columbus. It is unrealistic for us to think that we can have a magnet and not pay for program costs. And so, there have been criticism of our magnets as being magnets in name only or very, very watered down. And that's because these schools are struggling with the, with the money that they have available to provide a basic program of instruction like every other school. So, if we want to have program costs and do things that are unusual and interesting and innovative and add value to our children's education, we have to be able to cover program costs. By comparison, our state intra, our state inter-district magnets provide a state grant of $3,000 per student. That's what's received by the Center for, for Global Studies currently. But of the 200 magnet schools in the state, they've all received 3,000 for program costs. I can't see us doing this at all without a $1,000 allocation for, for program costs. So, that's a little bit of the, of an overview on theme, curriculum issues, and resource requirements. We would also need a different form of administrative organization in this school. Generally, a STEM school will have a coach, a STEM coach, a magnet-themed coach, whose job is to keep the program intact and to ensure that there is fidelity to the program for, for all students. We would envision a head, similar to how private schools are organized, we would envision a, a lower school head and an upper school head, it might be something in the equivalent to the assistant principal or housemaster position, and then a, a principal of the, of the entire campus. So, that's a little bit of unpacking of the STEM concept. I stayed away from STEAM for two reasons. One, I didn't think we could fit it into our short elementary day, and I think our labor contract with the NFT in terms of time is going to be a tough nut to crack that is going to require time and several years to, to accomplish. But also, the additional investment in the arts certainly takes this way over the $1,000 per student level. And I think it's important that at least initially, we treat our magnets equally and value each child equally in terms of their, their family's choices. Questions from the committee?
How many students are at Ponus right now? About 700 some odd students?
High sixes.
Yeah, high sixes? And then they'll be phased out slowly to bring them down to the sixth?
Well, there's, there's, on a practical basis, there's about 70 to 75 students involved in three sections, right? And this is really a distribution issue, because in the previous discussion we've had, we talked about adding three sections to Rotten, and there would be three less sections at, at Ponus. So, we have, we have that as the offset. But in addition to that, there will be about 50 students who would not be going to any middle school because they would be remaining at Columbus in the K-8 model.
And what, Stephen, in terms of, where does that leave Jefferson? Would that be just a neighborhood school?
Then, then that would leave Jefferson at approximately 400.
As a conventional?
As a conventional neighborhood school.
Okay. I think that covers a lot of the ground we wanted to cover. Mr. Zubik, if you want to go over it, but kind of demographically where these students would be coming from?
Yeah, looking at Jefferson and talking about the reduction in size down to about 400 students, we looked at having some logical boundaries there, especially with we turn to a conventional neighborhood school, using I-95 because that's the original starting point of that, and seeing if we were to divide Jefferson as sort of a minority zone, what would be the distribution of students. So, when we looked at the area of Jefferson, which is, yeah, our points do when it's highlighted in the darker red color and the lighter, I guess it would be like a grayish green color. We have currently about 437, 440 pre-K5 students in there. 86% are minority, so it's right on that threshold of where we want it to be for our target for racial balance. Three-quarters of those attend Jefferson currently, so about 350 students, 340 students currently attend Jefferson with several others attending smattering of other schools, and the largest being Silvermine and Kendall. So, looking at the reduction of that area, that could be the potential, being able to begin the alignment of, of a neighborhood school there, looking at the Jefferson north. And going ahead and taking a look at the area south of 95 for Jefferson, it's much smaller area, but it's pretty compact. There's currently 206 students that reside within that Jefferson South Zone, as we'll call it. About 82% are minority students and about 74% obsolete lower, and 78% currently, currently attend Jefferson there with 6% attending Kendall and Fox Run.
This is the area right around Columbus currently.
Yeah, just, you could actually pick out Columbus's, touching the wrong button.
The little, the little remote.
That's why I clicked last, must have come to turn it off on me. Colum, Columbus, Columbus is actually right here. So, you know, it definitely is proximate, but there is a pretty large density of STEM right in this area there as well. We were just throwing out some ideas there on kind of how that could fit in, whether or not that area would make sense as being one of those feeders if you were to retain the north area for the Jefferson Neighborhood School, adhering with Dr. Adamowski said about providing preference to those Jefferson students there. There could be some opportunity there, especially for that south area, which really wouldn't fit in with the north area, whether they would become part of the magnet at Columbus or potentially could be the seat for the elementary component over at the new Ponus school would, you know, still to be worked out. But we found that with the 200 students there, it could be a good start at working your way to, to, you know, populating the Ponus school. Just taking a look at that south area too, when we looked at sort of how the feeder pattern, knowing that you'd be having some conversations on, on ultimately reducing some of the size of Ponus. They, they currently feed Ponus Ridge what some potential options are based on proximity. It's very proximate to three of the other middle school feeders, whether that's Rotten, as we discussed, Nathan Hill, or, or even being able to send up to, I think it was sending up to West Rocks. So, there is some opportunities there to be able to, you know, better balance the middle school population as well, because it is kind of like a wedge area for the middle school feeder pattern. Mike, I know you had asked some specific questions on, on the demographics as it pertains to racial balance. What we did was we pulled together from the information we had at hand, really taking a look at the last five years with the data that we had, and we created these stacked bar charts just to illustrate the race and ethnicity and what are some of the trends that jump out currently. We're at 69% overall for the entire school system. That percentage has grown over the last five years where we were at low 60s back in 2011. What the trends are that we're seeing, the top bar chart in blue color are really those, those, those white students, Caucasian students, anybody who identifies as something other than, you know, Latino, Hispanic, Black, Asian, or other. That number has slightly decreased over the, over the last year, but over the last six years of data that we have, that has decreased by about 500 students. We've seen the largest growth in the Hispanic population there in, in the yellow, as is no surprise with what we're seeing statewide in many of the urban communities. That growth has been about 1,100 students with, we've, and we've seen some decline as well in the African-American population, with the other population remaining fairly stable. One of the other questions that you asked is, you know, where is, what direction is that going? And that's very tough to gauge without really getting into a detailed survey, but from the data points that we had, we, we had birth data as reported by the mothers with addresses in Norwalk. Doesn't pick up tremendously on immigration, not many things do pick up on moving populations, but some trends definitely have established. We've highlighted the current K-5 population. This is the area where you've seen your largest increase of minority births. You've gone from in 2003, 2004, from just under 50% at 49%, crossing that threshold to a pretty consistent 54, 55%, which then coincides with that boost that we've seen for the, for the population of minority students in the chart above. And with the latest data points that we've had, that 54, 55 is maintaining until we get to 2014, where we saw that number slightly dip down to around the 2005 level of 52%. So, kind of looking into our crystal ball there, what we're assuming is that that number's going to maintain fairly steadily, very, very steady at around 69%. We could see some modest growth there, but overall, what we're, what we're seeing is not the dramatic growth that we've seen over the last few years.
Great.
Before I get into some questions, you also had some additional information that we put in the packet as well. Looking at projections out to 21, 22, we provided that information from the projections we prepared as part of the master plan. We are currently in the process of update, updating those projections this week for the, for the budget cycle, but going back to our projections, we're seeing overall the, the population to be very steady. You're looking at about level numbers for the entire system. We're seeing some very modest decline in the total elementary numbers in the next five years. The middle school numbers are maintaining their level, but we're seeing growth in the high school numbers as those larger class sizes that are currently in middle, again, matriculating through.
I know we had one of our high schools, you know, we've gone to the student-based budgeting system, and one of our high schools, their enrollment came in 100 kids more than what you thought it was going to be this year?
Yeah, Brian McMahon.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I didn't look to see kind of what your projections have been for Norwalk High, if that was just a kind of a shift, or if we really seen faster growth than maybe you had anticipated.
No, in, in part, it's a shift, but we think there's something else there. What we're doing now is we're looking at students that may have been new arrivals or, or new admissions over the course of the year, see if that was the driving factor or if there was a particular program or need that was driving that number as well. We'll get an answer on that.
Yeah, the, the actual projections versus enrollment, the projections were spot-on. They were, I think, within three students.
Right, overall, the numbers were almost exactly right on there.
The Brian McMahon situation does represent a shift, because Norwalk High School is down while Brian McMahon is up. There's, there appear to be several factors at work. Some students are avoiding, some families are avoiding middle school and going to Brian McMahon for, for high school. So, you see an increase there in the ninth grade cohort being much larger than the, the eighth grade cohort. Immigration is currently playing a, a role. Brian McMahon has become the school of choice for immigrants. It's a very supportive environment. Many have been extremely successful there, and people are gravitating to it. It's a, you know, it's really an international school, and probably 20, 30 countries are represented there now in terms of student, student background. So, immigration is a factor, the excellence of the school is a factor. I expect this may increase further when the IB program is established next, next year. So, you know, you, you have a, a school that has just been very good in, in a, in a number of respects.
Yeah, I mean, just talking about that as a aside, when you think about it, we got a, three, four years ago, we had a student from Haiti who came from, after the earthquake, didn't speak English, went to Princeton. Last year, we had a girl go to Harvard from, I think she was Colombian. The year before that, we had a boy who was from Panama who went to Harvard. So, there, there is definitely a success story for new, new immigrants families.
And, you know, as the valedictorian said, it was a very supportive environment that she could not have as an immigrant student. She didn't think be successful to that degree anywhere else.
Okay, well, great. So, you're still, like, reviewing your numbers?
Yeah.
Subject to?
To change.
Change. Okay, great.
Any thoughts on all the construction that's happening in the city and how that might affect immigration?
Yeah.
In terms of, not because of, not the birth rates, in terms of people moving into the city?
Yeah, when we had done our projections as part of the master plan, we reviewed all the developments that were on the books at the time that those were either construction planned or even permitted, and we built those into the numbers with what we thought the student generation would be. But those are mostly coming in, not this year, but in that really four-to-10-year window out, when likely they get fully occupied and you realize how many, fully realize the number of students that would be in those units. So, we have included those in the number.
So, it's almost like a wait-and-see kind of thing right now, right?
It, it, we've added, so you traditionally rely on the cohort survival, like Dr. Adamowski mentioned, you know, we have an increased number of students. So, you rely on persistency ratios from one year to the next, ninth grade to 10th grade, what the historic number is. What we do is when we know we have developments that are breaking ground, we know the numbers of bedrooms, we know the type of units, and then we basically comp them against similar units to see how many kids actually come out of them, and we'll adjust those numbers and we'll add them to that base forecast to ensure that, you know, we're not caught off guard by something that's being built.
All right.
Well, thank you. We get some feedback from the committee. We want to make sure we're on the right track with planning now. You only have one more meeting, and that is going to be focused on South Norwalk, on the Eliot-Columbus sites. And, you know, we'll be making similar presentations, recommendations, and so on. But in terms of Ponus, are we on the right track? Is this something you feel comfortable recommending to the full board as part of phase one?
I think there hasn't been any controversy. There is a second lead out here, kind of just that Tom was going to potentially review.
Right, I'm going to wrap up the formal discussion with a discussion of some of the site issues, which is stuff that's already been presented to you previously by Silver Petraselli, but, you know, just sort of in context of the discussion that we've now had on what the plan is for Ponus. We wanted to reiterate the attributes of the site and talk about some of the circulation issues and so forth that I know there've been some questions about, so that's.
I apologize, I, I missed the theme.
So, if you, I don't know if there are any question, I, I, you know, if there are questions of Mike, maybe they're appropriate now, and then I'll jump in to wrap up the presentation.
Sure, well, I think the committee has, their questions have been answered from the demographic side. I don't know if there's anyone in the audience that had any questions, that wanted to ask anything about his figures or forecasts? Okay?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Limited right now to the forecast? I'll do them writing afterwards. I've got a number of questions, but this is the first amount of chance to take a look at this. I had a number of questions, even went back to the, to the survey, just kind of there's certain things we're using as the basis for the decisions that you need to make. And if I have the liberty, I'll ask some of those questions. For example, the, the, the number of parent, of parents that responded were from the zones that were called unassigned, and I don't have the survey in front of me. Was there an actual question to ask?
Was there an actual question to ask people? Were they from an unassigned area? And if so, how did they know?
The question asked, do you reside in one of the areas that is considered unassigned as part of the school district? And then it listed the addresses that are part of that, so that they have the guidance and whatever.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, the rest of them, I just have to digest this a little bit more. Well, in fact, if I do look at the actual projected enrollments though, the sheet, I think the last sheet that you had up there, if I'm looking at K through five, I'm reading this accurately, that you're around like 5,000 students?
Yeah.
Okay. And that pretty much stays the same across the level for all the years thereafter?
For the elementary.
It's about the peak? Yeah, it's about the peak?
Let me just pull it out of my detailed projections.
Yeah, I'm asking, because most of the models you're looking at are whether you're doing pre-K through five or eight, and this is being done because of the traditional enrollments. If I had to determine, we have to reach our peak of K-5 at that point?
According to their demographic number, yes. This coming year would be the peak.
So it will remain the same? So in the number, because it's kind of, it's been, looks like it evolves a couple of times. I mean, the current number that we're calling over enrollment, that sometimes I've heard is 750, sometimes 900, what is the actual current over enrollment at the kindergarten, at the pre-K through five level right now?
District-wide?
Yeah.
Well, I think that number of 900, I think includes the students that are portables.
Right, we have 15.
Because those portables are at the end of their desired life.
Right, so but the question, specifically at the pre-K through five level, because of 900, that would include your middle and high schools, am I correct? Because that's your overall excess over enrollment.
Counting the pulling off of all of the portables, it was just under 800 students for, 740 to 709 next to us for this year. So about just under 800 students is the deficit for seats.
And not that I'm advocating right now, they say that we do nothing, but that, so we can understand that that's the number now, and that's the number that we would not expect to increase.
Our projections are projected to increase.
I mean, at the K through five.
They're going up at the rate of about 200 students per year.
Yeah, what we're seeing over the next five years is a very shallow sort of that troughing as you had some larger classes come through. But then we're seeing out in the early, right around the time or just shortly after when the school construction program would be completed, comes back up on the uptick again and peaks in '25 and '26 at about 5,360 students. So it would be about 100 more than what we're showing on the.
So the elementary level, right?
Yeah, on the current, or projected for next year of '17, '18. But that's out '25 and '26. So even though it dips back down to 5,000 and remains there pretty steady, we are seeing that uptick, and that's largely when you have the culmination of a lot of the development that's in the planning, proposal permitting stage, they really get fully occupied as well as some projected uptick in immigration and birth.
Beginning what year?
We're seeing the uptick starting in about, well, depending on the scale of an uptick state, '22, '23, and then increasing about 100 students per year out to '25, '26.
Right. I am reading this accurately when I look at the table below that gives me like the 2019, '20 year, like it's a pre-K through 12. Total, it was like 11,541, and that was the entire?
That's the entire system. Yeah, I was just speaking directly to the elementary enrollment.
So if I go to enroll for that same year, then it was 5,078. So for the year thereafter, which was 2021, we actually, the number was lowered by about 22 students, correct? Am I reading that accurately?
Yeah, it's 36.
Right, we went from 5,078 down to 5,056.
And then down to 5,042.
And then we continue to go down. So at the elementary level, we're actually going down year by year for those years.
It bottoms, that's sort of the trough. It's the bottom of the projection. What we're seeing is starting year '22, '23, which isn't shown on the five years of the chart, we're looking at an enrollment uptick, and it begins increasing then for about 100 per year, every year after that out to '25, '26. And that's the limit of what we're able to project at this.
Okay, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, and that's 100 per year, not district, but 100 per year at the elementary?
Just at the elementary level, yes.
Other question I've got to ask, earlier in the presentation, there was a number that was given for the target, when you kept something like your achieved minority percentage, it was always at 85%.
Yeah, if the district-wide is 69%.
Yeah, the mean.
It's the district-wide average of like grades and how they're grouped according to the state racial balance law. There's two levels. There's, if you're at 15% is one of the critical thresholds of where you begin to put on notice, you're not required to draft a plan, but that's sort of the mark that we use, that number is slightly there above. So anywhere between 15% from that deviation, you're in good standing with the state, but then when you begin getting the 15 to 25%, you begin increasing of where you have a call for action or drafting.
20 to 20%.
Right, 20%. So I guess that's one question, whether I'm understanding this properly enough, because it looks like you're actually using the higher number as the target for where you actually want to bring your balance, rather than using the mean?
If we were to try to bring the balance to the mean on that every given school, which isn't required by law, you would have a very difficult time in sizing the school and balancing the neighborhood needs versus the out-of-neighborhood needs in order to meet that mandate.
You would have to have all schools magnets.
They would have to be completely, you know, mixed.
But if we built a school or did these modifications to a school and automatically used a number that's already on the edge of where you're going to be sighted, you have no room for growth or mobility or changing or anything?
Because it's going to be.
And changing demographics.
Because it's going to be largely governed by a magnet component, you do have control of it. If we were not to have any choice or magnet component at all, as we showed in the earlier iteration, we would be near 96%, which would be very far out of whack from where that average is.
I mean, I think the answer is, Bruce, that we want to have neighborhood schools as much as possible. So yes, we are pushing the envelope, so it can be as much of a neighborhood school as possible. If we went to the district-wide average, then you're still going to be busing a ton of kids all over the city, and our whole point of doing this was not to be busing kids over the city or to pass fewer kids than we currently are. And this is going to be, as you look at our strategic operating plan, this is going to be a district of choice. Kids don't want to go to a neighborhood school, they want to go to a magnet school, they're going to be able to.
Well, if it's going to be a district of choice, that'll automatically necessitate that you're going to have a lot of buses. Adamowski said something at the beginning of this, I think it was a very key point when I ultimately drew, that any one thing you do, that's all integrated. It's not like if you just do something illegally, that doesn't affect whatever you're going to do at Jefferson or whatever you do at PONUS. Whatever you do at one place is going to affect it, and I've actually been an advocate that we do look at the entire system, because we have some other schools that have very, a lot lower percentages when you try to work towards getting balance. And quite frankly, back in 2003, 2004, we looked at those schools, and for the same thing we're trying to accomplish here, we looked at there, we said, listen, why shouldn't there be a magnet that we're attracting people across the city to want to go to? Because when we speak specifically to the issue of busing, people don't mind busing their kids to Columbus from all over the city because there's a phenomenal program there. So I don't think the issue is busing. I think it's what you've said in your strategic operating plan, you want to be able to provide high-quality schools no matter where they are, you can use themes, you can do whatever is necessary and provide resources for kids. So the location may not be so much the issue. So that's why I'm bringing this up, because if we're at the key, if we're at 86%, you're, I mean, and you'll get a chance to answer this to Dr. Adamowski, wouldn't we then be forced by your lottery, you're going to be changing whatever that lottery's going to look like every couple of years? Who gets choice, who doesn't get choice? Okay, I'll let you answer from there.
Well, I mean, you're correct. Everything is connected to everything else, but it is also moving in a direction, right? Our minority enrollment is increasing, and as it increases, we will have to make adjustments up until the 75% level. At the 75% level, it doesn't matter. The state is not concerned with racial balance. You have, when you have 75% minority students, nothing can be balanced. These are all majority-minority schools under the state. Until we are at that point, and we're, you know, we're currently at around 68%, the racial balance guidelines will prevail, and we can go down 15% or up 15%, which means the lowest you can go is where Columbus is now at about 56%. And the highest you can go is where Silvermine is now as a dual-language school, which is about 85%. You know, there are, in any building program, you know, this is a tremendous outlay of public money, right? So we have to have primary objectives, but we also have to have some secondary objectives, and we have to try to accomplish as many good things as we can for the public investment involved. So this is about the need for 900 new seats, but it's also about a choice program in which the primary aspect of choice is every family having the default choice of a good neighborhood school in their neighborhood. Another objective is reducing transportation. We are way over the state average in transportation. We're busing 8,000 students every single day, right? We're at about 80%. The state average is a 50%. That should not be surprising in a district that does not have a school in its most populous, fastest-growing area, right? Should not come as a surprise to us. It should not come as a surprise to us that we're doing that in a district that actually has students unassigned, not assigned to any school. And as Mr. Barbis said, has been filling in in terms of space available in various places. These are not normal situations. They are aberrations that grew up for good reason at a certain point in time, but that point in time has changed, and it will be changing in the future. We have to make these adjustments as those demographic changes occur and we go along. So I think it's very important, when we look at the choice goal in our strategic operating plan, to realize that you can only have some choices if you have the default of a good school in your neighborhood. And secondly, we have to become more normal in terms of transportation. And we have the CVC telling us, you know, the best thing you can do for a young child's health is enable them to walk to school or to take a bicycle to school. And so all these things are important factors in a community. We can't just focus on one goal. We have to do things that create a better condition in a number of areas simultaneously. And that's really our job, it's your job, you know, as we look at these recommendations.
So then, I was correct to understand that 85%, so if you look at option two for the elite, that 85% would be your target of where you would want to go? And I understand a couple of different options of whether you're going to MOU with the Maritime or someone, if that's what you're going to do. And that's a document that can change every two to three years. Dr. Adamowski's recommending $1,000 per student for magnet schools, where if we have a school that's automatically, starting out 85% minority, and it only has $1,000 per student, and you can change that, and the MOUs, however your regions are going to change every year. We all understand the kids who are in poverty, you have a school that's largely, kids who are in poverty, we're not going to deal with the rates, we're dealing with just poverty. A school requires more resources, so certainly you're talking $1,000, just to help them do some programmatic things that would encourage other parents to want to have their kids to go there, then a school that would have additional needs, just based on the number of kids coming out of poverty, I think there's enough to show that you would need additional dollars in most of the schools.
I think I can answer that question, Bruce. The $1,000 supplement is a magnet school supplement specifically to fund the additional program expenses of the magnet school. The school would still receive the regular per-student allocation of, you know, roughly currently $6,500 per student, and in addition, a school that has a, you know, meets the threshold requirements for Title I funding, which, you know, free and reduced lunch eligibility would be the primary criteria going into that, would also have supplemental funding for, to address the poverty issues related with those students. So there are substantial additional funds that obviously would be needed to run the school. The additional $1,000 is really just a supplement to support the additional program costs associated with the magnet program.
So school in our district qualifies to be a Title I school by having more than 50% of its students eligible for free and reduced lunch. So we have six Title I elementary schools, and we have two Title I middle schools. So that, those funds are designated to be additional funding for students in high-poverty schools. Now, in addition to that, we have the Priority School District Grant and our Alliance Grant, which tangentially are also designed to provide support for those students that need more support. This is how we should be funding our Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, and which is why it's important that we, board members know this, that we take these other things that have gotten into those grants over time out so that we have that capacity for the neediest students in our district. And, you know, again, given that, we're in a very fortunate position to have very significant state funding, thanks to our legislature, to be able to do these things.
But I think, Bruce, the thing you have to realize is, we have 11,500 students. Roughly 6,000 of those kids are on free and reduced lunch. Only 2,000 of those 6,000 kids, not even, less than 2,000, are from South Norwalk. There are kids of low income throughout the city. It is not just a South Norwalk issue.
Oh, I, trust me, I fully understand, and that's why I bring up the issue, that it isn't just, for me, it isn't just the South Norwalk school. It is all of the schools that the kids who come from out of poverty go to. Because from my view, when you begin to take a look at the schools that have the largest percentage of free and reduced students and largely of color, and we can probably take a look at it, when it comes to testing and everything else, there are more challenged schools, all right? And all the research that's there, I've seen those are the situations that need more resources in order to offset that. So we've already got Title I that we've been doing. We've already got Priority School District funding that we've been doing. What I'm suggesting, if this board seriously consider, that if you're going to take a look at a model where you're going to really take and increase your density of population of kids that are poor into a situation, that they're going to continue forever now, because to be in a school that's going to continue to be largely poor and of color, that we need to make sure we're putting something in place now to make certain that there are additional resources there to make certain that those kids could be successful. And because five years from now, maybe a different board, 10 years from now, different board, different superintendents, you know, budgets change.
I know you've been talking about this question, but I don't see what you expect this board to do to provide guarantees for five or 10 years from now.
I'll give you a, for instance, I'll give you a, for instance, I'll give you a suggestion of something. Columbus Magnet School, it's additional dollars. Columbus Magnet School, when we desegregated our schools, we decided we're going to kick one school in the community, it was a magnet. And what did they get for doing that? They were given something extra. They did a Bank Street model, which is a model that also included them having an additional instructional aid. They're the only school that ended up having an instructional aid as elementary school. That's something good to have in a classroom, I'm pretty sure every school, I mean, that's additional support, rather than reducing class sizes, and if I can recall correctly, they've got to reduce the size of classrooms when it wasn't always as high as a lot of other places. That's a better setting for kids in poverty. And there's a lot of other things that you can do to make certain that if you're going to be very deliberate about saying, I'm going to put all these kids, the poverty kids who have a demographic that are, based on the demographic, are least likely to succeed, what are the things that we know? Proven practices that will ensure that they will succeed, and that this board can put cast in stone, and you can do as part of that program now.
Okay, well, we thank you for your opinion. I think we'll listen to Tom talk about how policy will look, and then there's some people from PONUS here, I'd love to hear that, and then we can wrap this meeting up.
Okay, I think I can probably walk through this pretty quickly. I think as it's already been indicated, PONUS is in fact our largest district-owned site or district-controlled site of over 41 acres. Just to put that in perspective, West Rocks and Nathan Hale are both about 15 or 16 acres, and Roten is. And Roten is less than that. So, at forty-one acres, this is a property that has the most room and most ability to accommodate any sort of expansion that we may be interested in pursuing there. Secondly, the building is situated in the highest elevation point on the property. There's, you know, significant developable land there. There are some wetlands down in the edges of the property and so forth. But the building is located in the right place to support further building expansion. And in fact, there's plenty of room for any building expansion that's maybe considered there. The site can accommodate the needed safety improvements. As you'll recall, the original facilities study from Silver Petroselli recommended that for safety reasons and as well as traffic flow reasons, it was important that we move the district to wherever feasible to segregated access routes and drop-off points between buses and parents. When these buildings were originally constructed, not that many parents drove their children to school. Now we know a lot of parents do drive their children to school, which causes traffic problems as well as safety issues potentially with the young children, you know, getting off of buses, going the wrong way and so forth. So, this site does allow for separate and distinct drop-off points for parents and buses, as well as separate and distinct access routes and drop-off points for the upper grades and the lower grades. And so, that's important as well to keep the younger children segregated from the upper children. The site also accommodates, and the plan that Silver Petroselli put together does provide for emergency vehicle ingress and egress from a different point so that in the event of some sort of serious situation at the school, there's an additional way for emergency vehicles to get onto the site. It also provides for age-appropriate ability to accommodate age-appropriate classrooms, educational spaces, and outdoor player is, when we say age-appropriate classrooms and educational spaces, what we're talking about is the ability to segregate, again, the lower school children from the upper school children so that you don't have, you know, problems with younger children getting intimidated or whatever by older children. So, the, this particular site and this particular building allows for those segregation of children as well as the creation of new spaces that we would need for the younger children, for outdoor play areas, grass areas, as well as paved areas, as well as playground facilities can also be accommodated. And the site allows for additional parking, which would be required, as well as stormwater management. So, all that fits onto the site. We've got a couple of schematics. The first one, I'm not going to dwell on, but I wanted to put it here just, again, this is a earlier iteration. So, we put on the heading, this is the, what the superintendent had talked about with the pre-K to eight with three sections at the lower grades and eight sections, six through eight, accommodating a little over a thousand students. The layout below still needs to be updated by Silver Petroselli, but it does show, I think what it shows is important is that the addition, which is in the colored portion of the building, how that's segregated from the rest of the building. And there is additional room to expand that footprint of that new construction as well. The left side is the slide is the conceptual site plan. Again, want to talk about here, this is the existing drive coming in, the existing building here, tennis courts over here. The new addition that I just showed you is down here, and there is room to expand that further. There's also room to potentially close the area between here or to add an additional addition between these buildings to create a courtyard area. So, the driveway circulation, again, right now, the driveway comes in this way. You come around and you go out this way. This would be changed to a bus-only entry and exit. Provides for bus entry coming in. Provides for a new separate bus drop-off area. Room to stack, I think, I think it's eight or nine buses here. So, there's room for stacking of buses. And then they can come and go back out the same way. The, so that would be the drop-off for the lower school, if you will. And then, students going to the upper school. The bus would come in here, drop-off students here. And again, there's stacking area, I think it's for eleven buses, if I remember correctly. And then they would continue out around the parking area and back out the same driveway. The additional, there would be new additional driveway and parking area here. The driveway coming in here would be for parent drop-off. And again, there's plenty of room for parent cars to stack up, drop-off in front of the new elementary building or lower school building here. Circulate back out and out the same drive. And then, for the upper school, the six to eight grades would use, the parent access would be through here. Again, circulate around, plenty of room for stacking of cars. And then leave parking there, and then back out the same drive. So, again, that provides the important separation of the buses from the parent drop-off as well as the separation of the upper school from the lower school access. The emergency access would be in through here as well as a emergency access around the back of the building. And again, that's an important safety consideration. Again, there are wetlands down at the back end of the property, on the edge of the property. But they built in areas for stormwater management here. There's other areas here that could be used for that purpose. There is, they built in some additional play areas, a playground area here. They built in a paved play area here and a grass play area here for the lower schools. So, that is, you know, new play areas that would be available. So, we think the site, and again, this is a rehash to some degree from what Silver Petroselli previously presented. But we think the site provides really one of our best opportunities from a site layout standpoint to get the site, you know, the way that we want it, to make the changes that we need to make so that we can make, you know, make the operation as successful and smooth as possible from an operational standpoint. I think that pretty well concludes all I intended to go over here. I don't know if there's any other questions that you have. We have Alan Lowe is here and Phil Odell is bill here. And we'll obviously try to answer any questions you might have on site layout considerations.
Okay, so here in the audience, we have George Andrew. It looks like you were just asking a question to a teacher at Ponus, who's also the number two in the NFT, as well as a member of Ponus's School Governance Council to his left, Joe Perella.
So, one of the questions that we have, that we're just trying to make sure, would Ponus be done first to be the swing space for Jefferson's remodel or the swing space for Columbus's, like, what if?
No, it would be potentially swing space for the Jefferson remodel, not the Columbus remodel. The notion on Columbus is that Nathaniel Ely would be the swing space for Columbus.
Okay, so we would go Ponus and build Nathaniel Ely's, so everybody moves from you.
No, we would build Ponus and Ely together at the same time currently.
And then you're done concurrently, and then the new space at Ponus, the K-5 magnet school, would be the swing space while Jefferson got, what was left of Jefferson got rebuilt, right?
And then I just have a couple other quick questions. The one, this diagram, the one with the classrooms laid out on.
Right, that's, that's an older iteration, so that's not the.
So, that, this is not really what we would do because you're going to have, if we're spending all this time to fill the addition and you have pre-K first and second, in a sense, isolated, you've now put third and fourth grade.
Could you go back to that slide?
Sure. If I'm looking at the slide correctly, and I understand that there could be changes, third grade and fourth grade would be in what is old Ponus and would be, the middle school or upper school would be moved to the second floor. Is that correct, the way this reads?
That's the way this reads. But again, this is not the, this is not the proposed layout.
I just want to make sure that when people ask me, I'm able to give them that. But I'll also explain, this is not the final.
Right. Silver Petroselli has to, we have to tell, we don't want to just kind of have, since Silver Petroselli keep doing lots of different iterations, one after another, after another, after another. We want the committee to kind of coalesce around a, you know, expected solution and then have Silver Petroselli, you know, develop the schematic that supports that direction that the board is moving in.
And the last question I have with the emergency egress, and this is more of like an aesthetic kind of thing, the egress that goes down the hill, that's literally like your feet from someone's house on that hill. Like, I mean, you can kind of see the house there in a corner. But I mean, those people aren't going to complain. Is that going to be completely repaved? And the other part is, when you go behind the building for this part here past the media center, are we removing trees and making that area wider and paving it? Or is that just still the grass area that, when we exit the building from an art room or a science lab currently, you're, and I'm touching a tree on the ridge as I walk around the building. So, is that?
Yeah, that's a level of detail that I'm not sure I can answer. You know, I, we did have a conference call with John Ireland today, and he did indicate that, you know, with any project, you know, there could be a requirement to remove some rock and move, you know, earth around. And I presume there could be a requirement to remove some trees. But I can't speak specifically to a specific tree in a specific location.
In that area, would this be, in a sense, like between the tennis court and the building, would that be fenced off? Because we're dealing with now forerunners and quads that are going back behind the building and tearing up the grass. So, it's, there's, people who are not part of the school.
I'm sure that would be, you know, something that we could accommodate if that's an existing problem that we can solve through a construction project and some fencing. I'm sure we would do that. I did want to answer your first question in terms of the emergency access and egress. That would be intended for police, fire, you know, responders, basically. And, you know, it could be, you know, yeah, even gated off so that it's just emergency responders that could access it. The intention is not that it would be used on a daily basis.
All right, thank you. Just, if I could just go back to Mr. Andrew's second question, right? I think there is a significant financial issue that will have to be decided and determined regarding how much work is actually done to the interior parts, right? So, you've looked at the site, some of the site improvements here. Ponus is our largest middle school. It is also our lowest-income middle school. Now, I think this plan will help both of those issues because we will be taking out three classes or equivalent of about seventy-five students. So, that will help reduce the numbers a little bit. Also, the fact that one of its feeders will be the lower school, which will be a citywide magnet, will help reduce the concentration of low-income students. So, we'll get a better economic balance in the school overall. But what, you know, how the STEM program is developed utilizing the space of those three rooms is a question. Does the rest of Ponus get updated? Does it, you know, is it improved cosmetically? There are, you know, I think we're able to estimate fairly clearly through, you know, the good auspices of our architect, what the cost of being, of building the lower school would be. But I think it's a more open question relative to your values and community desires in terms of what actually happens in the existing Ponus building. Because this would not be a renovation, it's new. But how far do you go? Do you do cosmetic improvement? Do you update for code? I assume we would do that. And then, what is the cost of actually having some value and its STEM facilities in the, in the school?
My guess is some of that would come out, you know, the whole complex in the purview of Ed Spec Committee. And that they would have to make some of that determination versus us. I think we had already discussed that, you know, we would extend air conditioning, you know, since all our buildings were used.
Yeah, so air conditioning is a good example. Air conditioning, code, cosmetic work, that would not be within the purview of the Ed Spec Committee. They will be talking about the program. And it's possible that through the Ed Spec work, the STEM facilities in those three classrooms or the equivalent of those three classrooms, however configured, would be addressed. But the rest of it is, I think, an issue that the board will need to determine.
Okay, well, I guess we know what we have to do. When's the last time Ponus had to face one?
Alan, I would say it's two thousand seven.
Yeah, it's had, the discussion we had with John today was that overall, the building is in reasonably good shape. I'm looking at the one portion of the facilities plan. It did, you know, mention that there was three-point-nine million dollars' worth of capital needs that they had put in the capital needs bucket for Ponus. And it included, you know, eight-hundred thousand dollars for toilet room renovations. So, I think, you know, the bathrooms, I'm guessing, are probably pretty dated in the building. Probably, you can probably answer better than us, but.
They're probably nineteen fifty-eight. I mean, it's pink tile, blue tile, it's.
Right.
That's coming back in.
You know.
So.
It's retro.
Yeah, and I know that the plumbers and everybody, they work very hard. But I mean, the sinks are the old school, like, I mean, they were the same sinks that were there when I went there, which was after a very long time.
You brought up one question, see, I was thinking was when Tom was talking about the circulation of buses and so forth. Would there be any chance the school, that might be a place where we could start with a longer school day, or by then maybe we would have negotiated in that the elementary school would run, you know, you'd kind of have a longer, you know, elementary would start with middle and they'd go longer in the day, something like that?
I think we have to seriously look at that. It would be ideal in this campus to have the school day the same length of time for elementary and middle. And obviously, we don't want to lower middle to the elementary. So, this would mean, you know, under what conditions could we bring up the elementary to a reasonable school day and a consistent program?
And Mike, before the, I could just ask, could you run through the numbers with us then? From this additional invoice sheet, this with the twenty-twenty-five numbers? Just because that's the end of your ten-year horizon, is that it? Is that the last year you projected enrollment for?
Yes.
So, could you just give us those numbers? You gave us the fifty-three, sixty for K-5, but what PK twelve, K-12, six-eight?
Now that you've put me on the spot.
Ah, sorry.
I've come across the middle, so we're looking at for the middle at twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, there's twenty-three, fifty-three for the ending point there. It should be noted that the middle does, however, peak in years twenty-twenty-one at twenty, actually, twenty-nineteen, twenty at twenty-five-hundred-and-ninety-one students. The, the high school. I do not have the high school with me, unfortunately. I'll, actually, I'll email those out to you.
If you could, just what that all are, just so we could see, you know, where we, because are you even, do you have total enrollment, either PK twelve or K-12 for that twenty-twenty-five? You have it, we'll take it, but if not, we'll wait.
Yes, I do have it, but it's not easily, I didn't, I don't have the final version with it all aggregated all. I'd have to do some math, but I'm glad to shoot that out to you tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, could you just put this in the context? I know your firm has done a lot of work around the whole state of Connecticut for a variety of both urban and suburban areas. Could you just touch on how, I don't think, I don't know if you did work for Stanford, but I know I think you did Meriden and some other.
We've been working for Stanford, Hartford.
Could you just kind of give a context, like what we look like, like some of the other cities?
From what standpoint?
From a demographic student population growth.
What we're seeing in, you know, Hartford aside, that's a little bit of a different. animal there with the very regionalized school system, same with New Haven, but those that have some limited sort of magnet components to it, demographically, your trends are kind of similar. Danbury seen a level of growth, maybe a little higher than Norwalk. Waterbury saw growth five years prior, but it's been very flat right now, but they're also seeing that increasing diversity there as well. Stanford has experienced, you know, a lot of growth throughout the 2000s aligned with the boom in housing there, which happened a little earlier than here with you, you're currently now going through the housing renaissance there. Some of the areas that we had discussed in Stanford were the increasing diversity, the increasing needs, and as Dr. Adamowski mentioned, they have a little bit of a unique system in how they handle their racial balancing component through that combination there. Where we see kind of Norwalk globally fitting in is one of those areas that, you know, really is sort of a landing point to some degree for some new arrivals. We pulled some recent information together, and we saw Fairfield County is the only county in the state of Connecticut that saw any new immigration, not just from international, but from other states over the last five years since the latest census. So we see that as a sign of, you know, what we're seeing in Norwalk schools with the growth and the increasing numbers of students coming in, whether it's Brian McMahon or others, as one of those areas that is, you know, being more resilient to the economic downturn. You take the flip side of it, you look at kind of the rest of Connecticut, netting out Fairfield County and maybe some of the urban areas, you know, we're seeing a much different picture, you know, pretty steep enrollment declines, very, very steep work declines, very little housing driving any of that, so it's almost like the tale of two systems, school systems across the state.
Well, I will tell you, if you talk to any ELL teacher, or if you go to some of our more urban schools, you go to a PTA meeting, it is United Nations and from countries you didn't even know people were coming to America from, so it is, it is really cosmopolitan. Okay, I don't know if anyone, are there any other questions about PONUS? That was kind of the focus of our meeting. Okay, well, if there are no further comments, the, this committee will be meeting again on December thirteenth, and the main topic will be going out through some of the programming of South Norwalk School, and where we need optimal locations, and we'll have a workshop, the full board will have a workshop on December twentieth on everything, all the facilities we're considering.
So what, what we'll do with your blessing is, we'll start structuring the PONUS discussion that you've had into a set of recommendations from this committee to the full board, and then after your meeting on the fifteenth, relative to South Norwalk, we'll do the same, so that you have, you know, we'll be able to reflect those recommendations at the, at the board workshop and provide, you know, some supporting rationale and data to the full board, similar to, you know, what you've been considering.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for your participation. Can we, we do have the minutes, I guess, if everyone has a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah.
Thanks, Bruce. And if so, I have a motion.
I suppose it's going to be a little.
Second. Okay, second, righty-bow. Brian?
Correction.
Correction? Okay. Minutes?
Yeah, this should be Jalen, Saeed, and John.
J-A-L.
Yeah.
Another minute or something.
And Ralph's last name.
Ralph, just call your last name for us.
Sure.
I'll get, I can.
Okay, if those are the corrections, can we have a vote? Yes. On the minutes, unanimously approved. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.